Good afternoon. I want to welcome everyone to the last meeting of the year, also known as the most wonderful time of the year. At this time, if everyone, again, thank you for coming. We have a couple of people taking their seats and it's fine. Again, thank you for coming. It's a very important meeting as we do the people's work. And at this time, city council members, if you would please stand for the invocation, which will be given by Pastor Robert Lee from Fairwood Agape Baptist Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Lee, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come today to, first of all, give you thanks for today, for another beautiful day. We ask, Father, as we attend to, attempt to tend to business, Lord, as relevant for our city, for our citizens, our council, we ask that you would give us wisdom, give us knowledge to do that which is pleasing in your sight. We pray, Father, that the love, the joy, the peace that your son brought to the world will be made manifest in this place tonight, and that everything that we say, everything that we do, will be done to your glory. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor Lee. And as always, sir, it's good to see you and thank you for your leadership in the things that you do in our communities. It's a great honor to know a person of your stature and all of the things you do to make Portsmouth and this Commonwealth great. So, thank you for coming out tonight. Council members, if you would, please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of city council are present.
Thank you. Members of city council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of November 24th, 2015, and a regular meeting of November 24th, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move to a second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Very good. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, 15-430, public hearing on rezoning applications. Item A, Z 1506, Simondsdale. Roger Cornet owner is requesting to rezone a .76 acre parcel currently zoned urban residential high to neighborhood mixed use in order to make the property zoning consistent with other zoning in the vicinity. The property is denoted on the Comprehensive Plans Generalized Future Land Use Map as a part of the mixed-use corridor. The property is presently occupied with an office, but no future use has been stated by the applicant. The property is located at 5,000 Portsmouth Boulevard. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have speakers. No speakers.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of council. As the clerk just noted, this is a rezoning request on Portsmouth Boulevard from urban, high-density urban residential to neighborhood mixed use. This property rezoned, as many of you may recall, at the time when the new zoning ordinance was adopted. Prior to that, it was under the old zoning ordinance's OR 75 zoning category. You see the property depicted there on the corner there, City Park Avenue, Portsmouth Boulevard. The house that was built in 1920, which has been converted to office use, sits next to that. Also, as noted, we've had no particular use proposed for this. This is primarily a rezoning request, I would say, to allow some of the uses that have been permitted under the old OR 75 that were kind of lost in the translation between the old and new ordinance to be accommodated. There you see the site plan for the property, existing building, parking to the rear. Couple of things to keep in mind, it's going to be important to be aware, the neighborhood mixed-use district is really intended to provide mixed-use appropriate and scale to residential neighborhoods around it. It's not our general mixed-use category. It's not a higher-intensity land use category. Any proposed retail or commercial building in excess of 5,000 square feet under the current code require use permits, so city council will get to see that. And a couple of things to keep in mind, both the current district and the proposed district allow residential multifamily under the existing zoning. They could be up to 25 units per acre, five-story buildings. Under the proposed zoning change, the maximum will be 12 units per acre. So, it's a lower intensity on the residential side with a few more commercial options mixed in, which we feel are appropriate considering this is a signalized intersection at City Park and Portsmouth Boulevard. Comprehensive plan designates this for mixed-use, as it was before, and as both the existing zoning district and the proposed would be, they'd both be considered mixed-use. We would consider the proposed zoning change to be a compatible and appropriate zoning change in accordance with the comprehensive plan. This item was considered by the Planning Commission at their meeting of November 3rd. They voted in answer to recommend approval. As I noted again, there are no particular uses proposed, so we don't have anything like that to show you. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z 1506. And at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on item Z 1506. Members of city council, this public hearing is closed.
With adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, seven zero. Item B, Z 1507, Long Point, Michael Gaddy, on behalf of Dollar General is requesting to rezone 3.76 acre parcel currently zoned urban residential high with conditions for a 36 condominium unit project to general mixed-use with conditions in order to build a retail store. The property is located at 3993 Twin Pines Road and is owned by Twin Pines LLC. The Comprehensive Plans Generalized Future Land Use Map denotes that the property is for commercial uses. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have speakers.
Good evening, once again. Again, this is a rezoning request to rezone the property from high-density urban residential URH conditional to a general mixed-use conditional for the purpose of constructing a Dollar General store. As noted, it's a fairly sizable parcel, it's about three and three-quarters acres. And it was rezoned as part of a larger development project act, I believe, in the 1980s when the shopping center was built and some of the commercial properties were laid out. This property, however, has remained vacant since the time the shopping center was built and has really been a subject of a number of different looks by developers as something they might do out there. Back in 2006, there was a rezoning application approved, which is what has created the zoning we have today. There was a proposal to build a condominium project. I just mentioned that under the zoning we have there does have proffered conditions and it does require a condominium. So, if anybody wanted to build something other than the approved condominiums under the current zoning, they'd have to come back through and rezone to something else. Again, this is an application to go back to general mixed-use, which would be consistent with both the parcel adjacent to it, has a shopping center along Twin Pines Road, and the smaller parcel on the other, on the, I guess, the northeastern side of the parcel, which is also vacant and zoned general mixed-use. This is a, just a photograph of the site. I think you're probably pretty familiar with this piece of property. I believe back in the eighties, or I recall, there was a single-family ranch house on this parcel before it was demolished and turned into a vacant parcel as part of the rest of the commercial development. Again, this is a proposal from Dollar General. This will be a conceptual layout of where they would place their building. Again, it's a relatively large parcel. There's a wetlands area in the back, which has a fair amount of vegetation, which would ultimately remain once they went through any type of a site plan approval process, and parking towards the front, towards Twin Pines Road. This is a rendering of the building. They've also proffered both the conceptual site plan and the rendering here. So, this will be pretty much consistent with what would be built, subject to going through the city site plan process, any modifications would be required as a result of that. Again, I noted there are proffers associated with this project. The Planning Commission considered this in November 3rd. I'll mention, we did have a note from the Long Point Civic League at the time, objecting to the rezoning, preferring to remain in a residential land use. The Planning Commission considered that. By a vote of four to one, recommended approval, with the one dissenting vote raising concerns about moving the Dollar General out of the existing shopping center onto the freestanding parcel next door. Glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions or comments from council before we... Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Members of council, we have the applicant, Michael Gaddy, and Mr. Richard Smith that are here and available if you have questions. Our first speaker is Mr. Andre Mayfield.
Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, and distinguished councilmen. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Andre Mayfield. I live at 11 Salford Street in Long Point. I've been a resident of Portsmouth for nearly 60 years, and I'm a member of the Long Point Civic League. I am here tonight to voice my opposition to the proposed rezoning of 3993 Twin Pines Road from residential to retail. We have seen the results of such zoning before. I'm sure the city thought the building of the Town Point Square Shopping Plaza adjacent to that property would be a great investment for neighboring Peachtree, Long Point, and our neighbors in Bishop's Green, Stone Mill Landing, and Hidden Cove. Instead, it has become an eyesore. Five of its businesses have closed, including the food line in Bottom Dollar. What remains now is a shell of a shopping plaza plagued with empty retail space except for a handful of small businesses. Most of the shopping plaza is empty and boarded up, and the parking lot is littered with potholes, a leaning light pole, and a magnet for criminal activity. In essence, that investment in retail space has resulted in an eyesore for the entire community and discourages prospective home buyers. Adding more retail space close to a visible eyesore would be a faulty decision. In addition, we have concerns regarding what that retail space would be used for. There are $11 discount stores within eight-mile radius of the proposed new Dollar General, including the Dollar General already housed in Town Point Square, $2 discount stores less than two miles away, and another $8 discount stores barely eight miles away. In summary, more retail space is not needed, no is another dollar-type store beneficial to the community. We, the residents of Long Point, ask that the request for rezoning not be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor Wright, council members. My name is Sandra Barkley, and I reside at 3821 Fleet Court in the Long Point neighborhood of Portsmouth. I grew up in this city, went to school in Portsmouth Public Schools, and worked for that same system until my recent retirement. I'm a member of Western Branch Baptist Church and currently serve as president of Long Point Civic League. I make these statements to assure you that I am supportive of this city. This evening, I wish to address the zoning issue for the property on Twin Pines Road. As a civic league, it is our belief that rezoning this parcel to commercial use when there is currently an abundance of underutilized retail space in the same area is not necessary. If there is a need for a commercial or retail property in the Churchland area, there is over 100,000 square feet of space available. 1021 High Street, the former Kroger's, has 55,000 square feet. Town Point Square has 29,000 square feet. 3525 Town Point has 10,440 square feet. 4,009 Cedar Lane has 9,907. Churchland Shopping Center, 4,500, and plus the former Harvey's Hot Dog, which is 1,000. And then 4404 West Norfolk Road has 1,540 square feet. Empty retail footage may be associated with a negative view of a community. Therefore, our question is, do we need additional retail space when there is so much currently available? Please consider this aspect and keep this property residential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barkley.
Good evening, honorable Mayor Wright and distinguished city council members. My name is Dan Schreiner. I reside at 3917 Flagship Way in the Long Point neighborhood. I'm a ten-year resident of Portsmouth, and I volunteer as the Long Point Civic League vice president. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the request to rezone 3993 Twin Pines Road from residential to commercial use for the purpose of building a Dollar General store. In discussing the zoning change, I believe it's critical to contemplate the current situation with the adjacent Town Point Square Shopping Center. During the past 10 years, the residents of Long Point have sadly witnessed the steady decline of the Town Point Square Shopping Center. Currently, most of the square footage is vacant, and the parking lot is in disrepair. It has become an eyesore. Further, disturbing proof of this decline is that, according to Portsmouth Police Department crime statistics, there have been four robberies of the businesses in the Town Point Square Shopping Center so far in 2015. The biggest reason I'm opposed to this zoning change is that, from a community planning point of view, it does not seem logical to build a new retail store beside a struggling shopping center. But I'm especially opposed to the choice of building a Dollar General store on that location. Dollar General already has a store operating in Town Point Square, and there's room for that store to expand into adjacent leasable space. A new, bigger standalone Dollar General will certainly draw business away from the current shopping center if it vacates its present space. It cannot be argued that the new store will create many new jobs because the employees who are working at the current store will simply move next door. Does Dollar General support our city's principle of a robust economy for working men and women? I do not believe so. Dollar General does not provide quality employment opportunities. In fact, Glassdoor.com, which ranks companies based on employee satisfaction, ranked Dollar General as the fourth-worst company in America to work for in 2013. Complaints included poor wages, poor benefits, long, non-stop mandatory overtime, unsafe facilities, higher-than-standard accident rates, poorly-trained management, and unresponsive upper management. Dollar General is notorious for keeping employee costs down by running their stores with a skeleton crew and forcing salaried managers to work up to 70-hour weeks. At any given time, there's only one or two workers in the store making them a prime target for robberies and shoplifting. Make no mistake about it, the Long Point Civic League is opposed to any new retail store being built at 3393 Twin Pines Road, but especially a Dollar General store. It will do nothing to enhance our community or attract new home buyers. We would much rather see that property developed as residential units, which will provide long-term, stable, much-needed real estate tax income for our city. We'd also like to see Town Point Square Shopping Center revitalized.
Thank you, sir.
With the kinds of quality stores and small businesses that will provide good jobs and the kind of shopping that will attract shoppers from all over church.
Sir, you got my support. You're getting ready to lose it. Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable Mayor Wright and esteemed city council members. My name is Thomas Cochran, and I live at 3959 Long Point Boulevard in the beautiful city of Portsmouth. I moved here along with my wife just over 12 years ago and have since been an active member of the Long Point Civic League, and also serve as the Neighborhood Watch Coordinator for the Long Point Neighborhood Watch Program. I am here to voice my opposition to the rezoning of the property at 3993 Twin Pines Road from residential to retail with the following rationale. The steady closing of the retail establishments in the Town Point Square Shopping Center only continues to make Churchland less attractive to home buyers. Closed stores with boarded-up windows do not exactly welcome, send a welcome message to potential home buyers. Rezoning the adjacent property will allow a new Dollar General to build on-site, will certainly not raise the bar for Churchland, nor will it attract new customers from surrounding areas to spend their dollars in Portsmouth, as there is ample number of bargain stores already co-located in the Churchland area. As the plan was presented to us on November 3rd, 2015, a new Dollar General is proposed to be built on-site with the eventual closing of the existing Dollar General, which will most likely not be utilized, thus adding to the blight in our community. This will only add to the volume of vacant retail space in our city. I would urge my city leaders to vote no for the rezoning of the property from residential to retail or commercial. Thank you all for hearing our civic league, and I trust our concerns are taken into consideration at decision time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well done.
First of all, I'd like to say I think the Redskins should have won that game last night.
You've got my support.
Right. We're going to do better.
This deal doesn't stand a chance.
Best team won.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. My name is DeForest Matt, and I live 3828 Flagship Way, Long Point, Portsmouth, Virginia. I've been living there since 1989, and Ms. Denette and I are the founders of the Long Point Civic League, which is doing an excellent job since it's been founded. First of all, I would like to say, it is not you, it is not me, but we. It is not you, not me, but we. We all live in Portsmouth because we love this city. That's why we built our homes here in Portsmouth. And we always had a city council that protected us, that cared about us. That's why I am coming to you tonight, because we, please, please do not rezon this land to retail that is sitting adjacent to the main interests of our neighborhood. I'd like to repeat that. It is sitting adjacent to the main interests of our neighborhood. That would be counterproductive to rezon that piece of property, because our neighborhood pays more taxes and is more beneficial to the city of Portsmouth than what this Dollar Store will bring. So, we asking you, please don't rezon that. Now, by being a strong neighborhood like other neighborhoods in Portsmouth, and we have good neighborhoods, strong neighborhoods in Portsmouth, we encourage and project an image for other families, other strong families, to move to our city. We offer a strong and intelligent workforce in our neighborhood. We have less crime in our neighborhoods because we help prevent it in our neighborhoods. We help our city schools. That's very important, to bring people to this neighborhood. We help our city schools because we, in Long Point and other great neighborhoods here in Portsmouth, we prepare our students to go to school, our children to go to school. And, strong neighborhoods produce strong leaders like we have out here, and especially what we have up here. I appreciate you very much. And that's a perfect example of strong leaders to our neighborhoods. Last, I'd like to quote a famous philosopher by the name of Phil Wilson.
Loose lips sink ships. Good night.
Good night. All right. Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker on this item is Mr. Robert DeFord, and he's really available if you have questions. So, there are no additional registered speakers. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z 1507. And at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on this item. And as this gentleman is coming forward, may he have...
Sure. Mr. Schirr.
I'll wait till after you finish, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Very good. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, honorable members. I am Rich Smith. I was on the question list, but I would like to say something.
Sure.
On behalf of the proposed zoning change, I am with the developer that will develop this property if the zoning is changed. We just completed a very successful project on Effingham Street in your great city and liked working here. We're not in the business to try to hurt neighborhoods or bring down property values. We are the last, Dollar General is the last store in that shopping center, or one of the last ones. They would like the opportunity to expand that store. It's going to double in size, double its employees. We like being in that neighborhood, but they can't continue to do business when their current lease runs out where they are, and they would look this opportunity to stay in Portsmouth, contribute to the community. And I will be involved in making sure that it is done well and as properly as it was done on Effingham Street through the great job of your planning commission and zoning people. And I respectfully request that you consider us for this zoning change.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else here? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Mark Kadulogiatrowski, PO Box 50141, Portsmouth, Virginia. I have nothing against Dollar General stores, but I do have issues with changing existing zoning to accommodate a use that was not contemplated in a particular area when our comprehensive plan was put together. A plan is something that people do in a thoughtful, reflective manner, and a lot of factors are taken into account. Our plan received an award from the EPA in 2012. So, it's not just any old collection of information slapped together and thrown into a binder. We edged out San Francisco for the award that we received. So, I'd say we did some quality work on that plan, and the existing zoning on that piece of property in question is part of what went into that plan. So, we should not lightly contemplate a change in use. We also should be supporting our neighborhoods. There has been quite a concurrence of opinion from those who will be neighbors to the new project. The facts have been presented capably, reasonably, and I think that it is necessary for us to support our neighbors. I don't live in Long Point, I live in Sterling Point. But we're only as strong as the weakest link. We're only as strong as a city as the weakest community. Not to say that Long Point is weak, but we don't want to see them weaken. So, the last point I want to make is, success of commercial enterprises is dependent on population density in residential areas. You do not want to do anything that will reduce the population in an area. So, for these reasons, I've... So for these reasons, I believe you should deny the request.
Thank you, sir.
And ask Dollar General to find another place among the thousands of square feet that a previous speaker identified. Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Honorable City Council, my name is Robert DeFord and I'm a member of Twin Pines LLC that owns the property. We came before you in 2006 to have it rezoned to multifamily condominiums. That's back when you could sell ice to an Eskimo. Now the economy has changed, there's nothing there, there's no demand for any residential there, and the land cannot afford just 36 units. We have been approached by somebody trying to buy the shopping center next door that wanted to incorporate our property in with it to make multifamily. One hiccup they had was Dollar General and they had a little bit of time left on their lease. The shopping center is not going to change. It is what it is. It's gonna have to be taken down or something's gonna have to be, the use is gonna have to be changed. Our 36 units is not gonna make a difference to that shopping center. I met with the Long Point Civic Board of Directors one evening and, you know, some people wanted a rec center there, someone wanted a Trader Joe's there. This is not feasible for us. We're not in that business. I do residential. This piece is not gonna work for me and that's why we had talked to, we had a contract with Family Dollar. They were extremely interested in it and then they sold out to Dollar Tree, then they went away. We have Dollar General that looks at it. I offered, maybe the city might want to buy it and make it a park. I spoke to the Willa Breeze, Mrs. Wheeler. She didn't want a park, she just wanted it to stay grass. I can't afford to pay taxes on it and just mow the grass. That's just not practical. I talked to Mr. Herbert Beeman with Peachtree Community Association. He said he was all in favor for that, for the Dollar General. This is going to be a freestanding site. It will be something, hopefully something will happen to the shopping center, they'll take it down, they'll build some multifamily or something on it that will be more useful for it. Since 1988, nobody has built anything on it. I think a rezoning came up one time for a mini storage, nobody wanted that. You know, we did come up with the condos. We had a nice plan, but we just cannot sell it like that. So, our only option is to find a buyer and really, nobody wants anything there. And I think the Dollar General is the best fit for the tax revenue and for the citizens of Portsmouth. They're gonna leave that shopping center one way or the other. So, keeping them there is not gonna make it any better. So, I hope you support ours and I do appreciate everybody's concern. Most of the people that spoke, I have met with them. And we're just trying to make the best use for it and stop paying taxes myself.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Is there any questions for me?
No, we're fine. You got a question for him? Okay. Mr. Simmons?
Mr. DeFord, tell me if you will, and if you can't, maybe the developer fellow can, why, why would Dollar General want to build a standalone store as opposed to backfilling some of this shopping center area that...
Well, I don't know the, the answer for Dollar General. I do know that Family Dollar, when we were, we had Family Dollar under contract and everything. When they were looking at the property, they told us that their sales go up 40% from, from being in a shopping center to being a freestanding facility. So, you know, 40% is a huge impact as far as tax revenue and everything else when you start bringing to the city. Plus it's gonna, it's a much nicer looking building. The one on Effingham is a really nice looking building, they did the mirror on the back. I mean, they've done a nice job with it. And I think they've helped the community. People in the community shop at Dollar General, they don't want it to go away, they want it to stay there. And this can be a nicer, more up-to-date store. It's a failing shopping center. It's not, the shopping center is not gonna get any better by Dollar General expanding. And Dollar General has no interest in expanding. So, you know, they want to expand in their own building and that's why they, if you notice, all the Dollar Generals, Family Dollars have all gone to freestanding buildings. They've all moved out of shopping centers. So...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other question? Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. My question's not to necessarily to Mr. DeFord, but I would like to say that I agree with you that shopping center is deplorable. I've seen it in its better days. I've lived out there since 79 when it was a bustling shopping center. That's certainly not the case now. In fact, most recently, a light post has either been knocked down or it's fallen down. So it's, it's really a blighting influence on that community. Unfortunately, putting a freestanding Dollar General there, I don't think will add to the community. And I know the citizens of Long Point, they've put it, I think, very nicely tonight. I wouldn't want to leave my neighborhood each morning and be looking at a Dollar General right in front of me. And I don't think it's gonna spur development there. From your description of the shopping center and its marketability, I don't think that's in the cards either. The shopping center will remain a challenge, but I don't think, I think we need to protect the community of Long Point and other communities out there at this point. So, Mayor, I will be voting against the rezoning.
Okay. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Nothing against the Dollar General, but this is not, in my opinion, the highest and best use of that land. We've had, we've heard from the Willa Breeze community and the Long Point community. This is one of those things I talked about in a previous meeting where citizens have the opportunity to have a say-so on what's gonna happen to their communities and what might affect the values of their properties. And this is where we get the opportunity to help and protect them. So if I am in order, I would like to make a motion that we deny this request.
Second. Okay. Very good.
We have a motion and a second for denial, and you'll be voting electronically. This motion for denial is adopted 7-0. Members of City Council, is it a consensus of the council for this item not to come back?
Not to come back. Correct.
All right. Just wanted to make sure.
All right.
Okay. Unfinished business, 15-413 Code Amendment. Ordinance granting the request of the city to amend zoning ordinance to require a use permit for all multifamily residential projects of more than two units citywide where such uses may currently be permitted by right. These amendments will require amending the use table located in Section 40 dot 1 dash 4 dot 1 in addition to other related sections of the zoning ordinance. CA 1502, first reading vote, 3-2, approved. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that we deny the request for the multifamily. Excuse, no, wait a minute. Which, which one are we doing?
You're on the ordinance.
The ordinance.
The code amendment.
I make a motion that we approve the code amendment.
Second. Okay.
We have a motion and a second for adoption, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 5-2. City managers' report, 15-431, adoption of an ordinance appropriating $42,179,179 by classification to implement the operating budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools for the third quarter of fiscal year 2015-16. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for approval?
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 15-432, adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 25-92 of Chapter 25 and Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to establish fees for individual use of recreational facilities and participation in adult class programs. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldy Yutrowski.
Good evening. I have issues with this proposal. First of all, the fee structure seems skewed. As a senior who has never turned down a discount, I am nonetheless concerned that in the fee schedule for membership cards, seniors get a discount of 75%. Young people get a discount of 50%. Now, you know, I ride Amtrak a lot, seniors get a 15% discount. I ride HRT a fair amount, seniors get a discount of 50%. And I could see if there were some sort of income eligibility for this. If you are a senior who is receiving tax relief and you paid a discounted rate for a card, that would be one thing. But there is no income limit. And that's the other problem. So if you have a two-parent household and a couple of children, you're talking about $60 a year for that family. If you have more children, of course, it's another $10 increment. If it's a single-family household with two children, it's $40 a year. And I would not want to see the investment we made in a major recreational facility being undercut by fees that turn away children who would benefit from it. So I would like you to defer this item and have that fee schedule revisited. I think there should be certain income eligibility levels sliding scale fees. The other thing that could be done to offset if you are going to have a fee structure is to do what the museums do. They have a whole range of membership levels and people at the higher end of the scale can elect higher levels of membership for higher levels of benefits. You know, it doesn't have to be a negative scenario. You can provide greater access, let's say you get a free class with a higher level of membership. So you have a way of offsetting the costs for those at the bottom of the economic ladder. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. My time's up already? Three minutes, three minutes. Okay. Mayor, what, what I was gonna say is, what the speaker said is well, was well taken. But you know, we went running around about this and, and I had real problems with charging the, the youth and we struck all of the charges for the youth for...
Programs.
Programmatic usage and just a one fee, one-time fee for the ID card. To his point, those children who have economic, economic disadvantage, there are other programs that support them to, will support this for them. Portsmouth University Housing Authority has some programs. I, I'll tell you what, let me, let the expert, if she will, I'll, I'll let the city manager elaborate, but there are things in place for those who may not be able to even afford that one-time fee. My big concern was a, a usage fee each time they came to the facility and, and will even be able to cover that one-time fee for most of the bucket recs. Mr., Mayor Manager?
Yes, correct.
Yes, ma'am. Turn your mic on. Yes, ma'am. Please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. Cherry is correct. Over the years, the Department of Parks and Recreation and its programmatic components have had partners throughout the city from PRHA organizations, churches, to help support the programmatic pieces which there were fees. For example, one of the stellar programs is the Summer Raise Program, which there were over 650 students that participated in that program this past summer, which is a fee-based program, for it's a total 10-week program. However, no child was turned away. And those students or youth who had some deficits in regards to what the fee was, we had PRHA to support, we had other sponsors to support children, we had churches. We have put in place no fees for programs that are the regular day-to-day recreation programs. Our summer program is a long-targeted program, which is a full day from 6:30 in the morning all, all the way to 6:00 at night, which that's a different program and there is a charge. But with this, which we are putting in place, as we discussed and had Acting Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Palmetra, indicated that, and we brought to you all of the research that we had looked at cities across the region, we were the only city that did not have a membership card. And one of the things that we brought forth in the membership piece was accountability. Being able to know who was coming in, in our buildings, what children are part of the program, so it adds a sense of security and safety. And in addition, we already have people or churches and organizations who are already saying if there is any child whose family could not afford the, a child will not be turned away. There will be support pieces in place for this membership fee.
Thank you. Well done. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to get clarity from the city manager. The way this ordinance is reading, is this the adoption of the actual fee schedule?
Yes.
Or, okay, or is this moving money from one line item to another?
We, we have proposed what monies we can bring in as a result of the fee schedule. So in January, we would, we would put in place the fee schedule. So in order for us to, the money that we are, we are anticipating bringing in, this would be an appropriation for that.
Okay, so this is an anticipated...
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's right. And we, we have, we've really honed in on this and feel we can develop this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice Misses?
Thank you, Mayor. I went back and looked at our discussion from a few weeks ago during the work session when we talked about this. And at that time, I suggested that we try this fee structure without any fees for children as a, as a stepping stone into this. You know, y'all tease me about being all about public safety and I am. And that includes the safety of the public. And I think we're talking out of both sides of our mouth when we say we want our children to have something to do to keep them off the streets and to be safe, but yet we've got programs for them that some may ill be able to afford. I actually really like Mr. Godoldy Yutrowski's idea of the family-tiered membership structure like the museums have. To me, that's a marvelous idea. If, if, if my family wants to buy a family membership for four of us, that we can go to four classes a year and go to the pool every day and whatever we can, and if Mr. Meeks' family wants to just have two children, then, then that's fine too. I don't like this $10 for kids. I just don't like it. And I'd like to see us tweak it a little. I, I don't really want to vote against this, but I can vote for $10 for kids.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Were in need of a motion?
Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 5-2. 15-433, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $175,000 in the FY 2015-16 General Fund for recreational facility and adult class fees for use by the Department of Parks, Recreation and Leisure Services for program administration. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldy Yutrowski.
Good evening again. My objection to this item... Good evening again. My objection to this item goes along with that to the previous item. First of all, I'm not sure what your, well, I've seen, I've seen the numbers, the table of numbers that was in the agenda description. But I think you're being overly optimistic. I believe your pricing structure is going to be a deterrent to participation, and you are not going to achieve the revenues that you anticipate. So rather than appropriating this as one-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars from fee income, I would rather see you appropriate that amount of money to cover the necessary operations, and whatever you receive in fee income, you would then partially offset that with. Let me say another thing that I neglected to say in the previous presentation. This is justified, this fee structure for something we have always received as part of our benefits of paying taxes in this city, as incremental cost considerations. So the rest of the program is covered out of the general fund, and the incremental costs of running new facilities, an additional swimming pool, additional programs, is being covered by the fee structure. Well, when you look at one-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars, you're talking about less than one-third of a cent of the real estate tax rate. So you're not raising a large amount of money here, and what you're doing in terms of potential denial of service to those most in needs is worth, to me, well, much more than a third of a cent. I would ask you to deny this, or to reject this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cherry?
I'm just gonna say, the city manager very clearly said no child will be turned away.
Right.
And so that is and will be the case.
Thank you.
Councilmember, there are no additional speakers on this item. We're in need of a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven-zero. Fifteen dash four thirty-four, adoption of a resolution accepting the conveyance of title to three-eleven County Street from the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to the City of Portsmouth, and authorizing the city manager to execute documents to fixeate the conveyance. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption.
I have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven-zero. Fifteen dash four thirty-five, adoption of a motion accepting the two thousand and sixteen calendar of city council meetings. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven-zero. New business fifteen dash four thirty-six, boards and commissions, Councilman Edman.
We have nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Fifteen dash four thirty-seven, items submitted by council members, adoption of a resolution supporting the adoption of a constitutional amendment providing for the automatic restoration of civil rights of felons upon release from incarceration. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker. Mr.
Okay, let me call on the Vice Mayor, and then we can bring Mr. Yutrowski up. Yes, ma'am.
I supported the concept of this resolution to share with our General Assembly delegation, to restore voting rights to those who had served their time and paid their debts to society. I don't know who on staff actually wrote this resolution, but I won't support it the way it is currently written. The very last paragraph of this resolution says, "Be it resolved by the city council to urge the General Assembly to adopt the necessary joint resolutions, blah, 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 to provide for the automatic restoration of civil rights upon a felon's release from incarceration." Well, just because a felon is released from incarceration doesn't mean that they don't have fines to pay, parole to serve. That's not the end of the line for some felons. In addition to the fact, there's no discrepancy here between a Class One and a Class Two felony, you know, the guy that murders Aunt Suzie versus, you know, the guy that, you know, sells an ounce of cocaine. And I'm sorry, in my mind, that's different. I went online and I found the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Restoration of Rights packet on the internet, you know, about how for low-level felonies, it's almost an automatic thing right now. And even for those more violent offenders, there is a process that is provided to the Secretary of the Commonwealth and the governor, and we know that Governor McAuliffe and Governor McDonnell before him have been very good about restoring rights to those folks. But I think this is just way too broadly written. I mean, the way this is written, we got a guy getting out for capital murder, and he can go out and buy a firearm. I just, I think it's too broad, and I think, I would support it, again, with a little tweaking, about voting rights, not all civil rights.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. When I read the resolution, I called the Vice Mayor today, and we had that conversation. I pointed out the same thing. Something happened between the public work session and the authoring of the resolution. So I wanted to support it, but I can't support it when it's automatic on Class One and Class Two felonies. You know, everybody makes a mistake, but somebody killing someone or distributing heroin or something like that, I'm not certain that, I know I'm certain that I don't want those folks choosing who our leaders are gonna be. So with some tweaking, I could support it, can't support it as it's written.
All right. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we had this conversation with our delegation, and I think they understand our intent and what we want. Part of the issue that the, some of the legislations that's going on now is about, is about fines, that the fines have been prohibited for some lower-level felons to even get their rights restored because they had to pay, still had to pay those fines. So with the thought that our delegation truly understands what our intent was, and we had this conversation with them, I'm gonna support this. And it can still be, I mean, if the wording gotta be changed or something, that's fine, but I'm not gonna vote against this because somebody on staff didn't write the exact words that we wanted, when we had the conversation, and our full, and for a change, our full delegation was present, and they know exactly what our intent is, and when they get this resolution, they won't even have to read it, really, because they already, we had the discussion with them. So I'm gonna support it, and if it needs to be changed, I don't have a problem with that. But if it's not, I'm gonna support it tonight.
Okay. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. How big of a deal is it to get it tweaked or changed, or is it a big deal?
It probably would take them two minutes.
Is that Deborah looking at me saying?
I'm just looking at you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is that something you wanna?
Well, let's let the Vice Mayor speak, and I wanna hear from the speaker, and then we'll make a determination now on just what the level of tweaking and how we can do this and move this along.
Because to not do this, Mayor, just because of a couple of words, is, that
I agree.
Doesn't make sense.
Okay. Go ahead. Vice Mayor?
I mean, I was gonna, I would go so far as to, if we wanna do this now, we want to have it done so that it gets to the General Assembly. You know, if we take two of us and agree to sit down with Mr. Ashby, you know, and take a roll call tomorrow, I'm fine with that. Or I'll move to defer it to January. I just don't like this very, very broad term. I mean, it wouldn't hurt anything if we defer, and I agree with Mr. Cherry.
If it's just a tweak, we can take a five-minute break, we can make the correction now, and then we can vote on it.
That's fine.
And so, if that is the pleasure of the body.
I'm okay with that.
We're okay with that. What is the tweak? That's the operative word.
I think it's voting rights instead of civil rights, for me.
Voting rights in lieu of civil rights, okay?
And exclusion of Class One and Class Two felonies, for me.
Mr. Mayor? Exclusion of Class One and Class Two. Okay, Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, can we just either vote it up or down, and then we can move on from there?
Okay, there's a... Is that a motion?
Yeah, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval.
Well, that's right, we have a speaker.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have a speaker.
But I've noted your motion.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good evening again. For a number of years, I have come before council at this time of year and asked for a motion or for a resolution of this sort. And I want to speak to the vice mayor's expressed concerns. First of all, I share the concern that it is voting rights that is my concern. Second Amendment rights are a separate issue. There are other things related to that. I'm not interested in that aspect of it at all. But the level of the felony, the Commonwealth prescribes certain punishments for certain crimes, and there is no parole in the equation. Parole was abolished under Governor Allen. Insofar as gubernatorial discretion goes, I remind you that when Governors Allen and Gilmore were in office, the number of people who had their rights restored by governors was much lower than it has been subsequently. And there's nothing to say that we won't be back in that mode again in the future. There needs to be an institutional method of restoring people's rights. With no parole, the Commonwealth should be satisfied by the punishments that are prescribed by law. You don't get off early. If it's a capital offense, they're not getting out ever. There's no parole. So we are getting wrapped around the axle here on certain things that do not apply. Please do the right thing, help people come back into voting citizenship in this society. We have, we had, as of November third, sixty-one thousand voters, registered voters in this city, out of a population of ninety-five thousand. If you account for the fourteen thousand students in school, that takes you up to seventy-five thousand people who are accounted for. There are another twenty thousand of our population who are not. I suspect, based on my experience in canvassing neighborhoods for other purposes, that perhaps as many as half of those twenty thousand are not registered voters because they're not allowed to register. Let's do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Okay. If, Dr. Whitaker, if you would, would you have an objection to amending your motion to change the modification of the wording from civil to voting rights?
Right, I have no problem with that.
Okay, and if your second's still valid, Mr. Cherry?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, with that modification, can we move forward on the vote with this?
What about the non-valeant?
There's a motion on the floor to move forward, to adopt this item, changing it from civil to voting, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's been seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
You're voting electronically.
I'm okay with that.
This item is adopted seven-zero.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Are there any other items submitted by council members?
Yeah, actually, I do want to just say, last Saturday was a whirlwind Saturday for our city. We had all kinds of activities going on. We kind of divided and conquered, I guess, as a council, with the opening of the Santa Claws, with our manager and a couple of our council members, with Ms. Sarah Elum, I don't know how many of you know her, but this woman has been doing a thank-you dinner for the last thirty-eight years to our veterans. She invite every year here to Portsmouth veterans from the Spinal Court Injury Center over at the VA Medical, as well as some of the, as she called it, old-timers, and some veterans here locally in the community. And I've been invited for the last five years, and have been every year. And it is truly a special moment to see these veterans come over every year and look forward to coming to Portsmouth and being appreciated. And they actually tell you that during the dinner and during the fellowship and piece of it. And so I wanna, again, once again this year, put my hats off to Ms. Sarah Elum and Post One-Ninety, and all of the other folks that work in conjunction, putting that dinner on and doing what's, doing what's right. Also, we had several activities that afternoon. The I.C. Norcom Athletic Hall of Fame had a 2015 induction ceremony, and it had quite a few people that were inducted, and it was quite an affair. And you learn a lot of these things. I did not know Rolando Lamb, who I went to school with and played at VCU and in the NBA. His son is also a NBA ball player, but it started with Grandma. Grandma, I think her nickname was Rebound Marie, was inducted into the Hall of Fame Saturday, and it was quite an honor to see all of those family members there and see Rebound Marie being inducted into the I.C. Norcom Hall of Fame, and all of the other inductees, and our very own city manager was inducted. And I don't know how much you all know what she does in way of education and kids and giving of her time, but she has spent quite a few years on the sidelines at I.C. Norcom and working with our ball players and all of our athletes and doing the right thing. And I thought it was so fitting for the Hall of Fame Committee to induct her into that, and I thought her comments were right on point. And so, Ms. Manager, I want to say congratulations, and you're in the hall now, baby.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, with that, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir, indeed. I want to take the opportunity to remind everybody that it is the Christmas holiday season, the second day of Hanukkah. And we do have two important Santa Clauses in the city. One at the Portsmouth Cultural Center at High and Court Street with the Coleman Nursery Collection that's there on the weekends, the Old Town Santa. Then we have the resurrected Midtown Santa, whose Santa House was open last Saturday, and he'll be there many different evenings and weekends in the parking lot at the new Kroger Marketplace. For those of you who were sixties babies, you may find friends or your picture on the wall inside, the old Polaroid photographs of little children who would now be sixty-ish on the wall inside, who would have gone to see the Santa at Mid-City. I remind you again, it will snow Friday and Saturday nights in December at the Children's Museum outside in the Middle Street Plaza. And this Saturday, December twelfth, the Old Town Holiday Music Festival will happen on High Street from the downtown waterfront to Effingham Street between noon and six p.m. There will be all sorts of music from the great fellow that plays the violin, Eric
Taylor.
Taylor, to little children's choirs, to gospel choir. Taylor, to little children's choirs, to gospel choirs, to school kids. It's a wonderful musical day. The firefighters will be out with their chimeneas, having bonfires on the sidewalk and roasting marshmallows. This event is a really wonderful family event, great time to come see Santa Claus. There's a little bit of everything, from jazz to gospel to country. And it's all free, it's all open to the public, and it's PG-rated, so come out and enjoy downtown on Saturday.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 15-438, report on pending items. We have none this evening. 15-439, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Stephen Hoag.
In honor of my court date on December 17th, I'd like to talk about jury nullification. Jury nullification is when a jury declares someone innocent when they know they are guilty. This can be done when people oppose certain laws or think the government is immoral. In a criminal trial, it only requires one jury member to declare a guilty person innocent. And because of the double jeopardy rule, there can be no appeal. The entire power of government can be opposed by a single individual. Virtually every one of the founding fathers of this country supported jury nullification. They supported nullifying the government laws and letting people go free who didn't pay oppressive taxes or oppose oppressive laws. Thomas Jefferson was a former governor of Virginia. He states, quote, "It is usually for the jurors to decide the fact and to refer the law arising on it to the decision of the judges. But this division of the subject lies with their discretion only. And if the question relate to any point of public liberty, or be one of those in which the judges may be suspected of bias, the jury undertake to decide both law and fact," unquote. Lyssander Spooner was an abolitionist. He supported the Underground Railroad and opposed the Fugitive Slave Act of 1850. People were being convicted of violating the law for helping slaves. Lyssander Spooner wrote a book called An Essay on the Trial by Jury. In this book, he advocated jury nullification. Mr. Spooner states, quote, "The bounds set to the power of the government by the trial by jury, as will hereafter be shown, are these: that the government shall never touch the property, person, or natural or civil rights of an individual against his consent unless in pursuance and execution of a judgment or decree rendered by a jury in each individual case upon such evidence and such law as are satisfactory to their own understanding and consciences, irrespective of all legislation of the government," unquote. Sometimes the government of Portsmouth thinks they can enslave this population. The extent of your income that they take above the necessary scope of the legitimate government is the extent that you are enslaved by them. For slavery is when you are forced to work for someone else. The government of Portsmouth, like the British Empire in the Declaratory Act, thinks that they can legislate for us in, quote, "all cases whatsoever," unquote. As Thomas Paine stated in The American Crisis, quote, "And if being bound in that manner is not slavery, then is there not such a thing as slavery upon earth?" unquote. As the Constitution of New Hampshire states, quote, "The doctrine of non-resistance against arbitrary power and oppression is absurd, slavish, and destructive of the good and happiness of mankind," unquote. I stand before you an open violation of oppressive unconstitutional laws passed by this city council. I don't think you have an attorney in the city that can get a conviction. That's why I'll be pleading not guilty on December 17th and exercising my right to a jury trial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sheriff Bill Watson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A couple weeks ago, I was here, I was talking about Portsmouth businesses. And a statement was made that everything had to go out on bid. Not so. I've got state code right here, okay? State Code 2.2-4302.2 allows for competitive negotiation. It doesn't have to be the lowest bid, okay? We have the highest unemployment rate in the city of Portsmouth, but yet we're dealing with businesses in Chesapeake and Suffolk, and I guess New York would be next. I was in Napton Square the other day. We have a grass-cutting company from Hampton, cutting grass in Craddock Square. What happened to Parks and Recreation? What about the $100,000 y'all spent on new trailers and chainsaws and lawn mowers and everything else? What are they doing? They're on the payroll, they need to be out there working. Now, there was a big mistake made here when you said it had to go out on bid. Let me tell you what the state code says. A single quote from $0 to $5,000. You don't even have to have a quote at all. You can give to any business you want to. I want to know why we're not utilizing Portsmouth businesses. We've got six sign companies here in the city of Portsmouth, and we're dealing with a sign company in Chesapeake. It doesn't take about $750 to let her a police car or sheriff's vehicle, a couple hundred dollars, do a motorcycle. Why are we sending them to Chesapeake? What about unemployment rate? Think about that. These businesses are paying taxes in Portsmouth. They pay personal property tax, they pay real estate tax, and yes, it's true that businesses from other cities pay sales tax to Portsmouth, but they're not paying real estate tax, and they're not paying personal property tax. It's a slap in the face to our Portsmouth businesses to go to another city. And it's $5,000 per incident. We only buy one or two police cars at a time. So, we could send whatever we get, police cars, sheriff's cars, motorcycles, or whatever, to one of our Portsmouth businesses. We don't have to put it out on bid. It's right here in black and white. But y'all told me I was wrong. I'm telling you, y'all are wrong, okay? It's time to start taking care of our businesses. Also, I'd like to know who basically took our rights when we came to work for the city of Portsmouth for our health insurance. I didn't see anything come to city council. I want to know who had the authority to just do away with our health benefits. Now, we came to work here 20, 25 years ago. This is part of the package that was offered to us for the crappy pay that y'all give us. Well, 25 years later, we sit the same crappy pay, but now you're taking our benefits. I want to know who made that decision. I want to know who to sue. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. Steve Carroll?
Evening. I've been a resident of Portsmouth for 59 years. I started my first tax-paying job when I was 15 years old. I worked three days a week after school. And if I'm not mistaken, I started at $1.40 an hour. And I've been paying taxes for almost 45 years since then, real estate income taxes, what have you. I had to learn how to do my own income taxes, and have, to the best of my ability, done so honestly since then. And I must confess, I have a serious lapse of character. In 1967, Mrs. Winnick caught me pitching pennies behind Churchill and Elementary School with the boys, and I didn't claim that on my taxes. I put in a very long day Friday, November 13th, and I missed the 6 o'clock news, but I did have a phone message from a neighbor to tell me to watch a story about Councilman Whitaker on Channel 13 News. I have some papers here and some other documents. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a CPA. I'll just simply quote part of the story that I got online. Quote, "Portsmouth City Councilman Mark Whitaker's company is being taken to court after defaulting on a loan and not paying real estate taxes for years," end quote. Another segment, quote, "The suit says New Bethel Development LLC and Whitaker haven't paid real estate taxes and storm or fees since 2009. The property also has a lien against it for cleanup done by the city." That's another $47,536 on top of the $161,508, end quote. According to the city's 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, please, our accumulated debt now stands at $606 million. That's 85% of our legal debt limit. That debt is approximately $20,000 for every tax-paying household in Portsmouth. If we could generate $10 million in surplus, it would still take us 60 years to dig out of that hole. The city of Portsmouth is functionally bankrupt. Our mayor decided to lump an additional debt on us when we bought the old pine site and wanted to pour countless millions into a rec center we simply can't afford. This year's budget shortfall is forecast to be $20 million. Last year, it was $11 million, and ultimately resulted in a 3-cent increase. On top of this, we already pay the second highest real estate tax rate in all of Virginia. We're owed an explanation of where why Mr. Whitaker has this delinquent situation. Thank you.
Mr. Randy Bailey?
Ho, ho, ho. Santa has come to promise the citizens of Portsmouth that 2016 will be a much better year, that things will look up. Unfortunately, Santa cannot promise the young boys and girls in front of him anything much better than maybe a bag of coal, because you've been very bad this year. When I enlisted in the service, I rose my hand, and I swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States, and all those laws and things that went along with it. As an elected official, who then swears upon that office to uphold the laws and the bylaws and everything else that comes with the election process and the post which one takes, and as a leader of a community, and someone who is supposed to set an example for young people, Mr. Whitaker, it certainly would be nice if you paid your taxes and set an example. You want to sit up there, Mr. Pompous, it's time to step up to the plate. Because if you can't uphold your part of the bargain as a constitutional officer, and uphold the laws of Virginia and the state and the city, it's time for you to resign. If you would please stand and tenure your resignation, the city would appreciate that in that respect. Thank you very much. You all have a nice Christmas.
Good night.
Mr. Clyde Toler?
Happy holidays to all.
Same to you, sir.
To the city of Portsmouth, and to this council, each and everyone, happy holiday. Well, I want to say, go back to item 15-431. Ted Lamb here, tell him to take some of that money and get that bar of fish at that high school. That auditorium was about 33 degrees last night. You would have been something, you left seat, but I stayed almost froze. But anyway, those detectives, homicide, don't you know that 22 homicides have been in this city this year? Now, I came before you the last time, I said, "Let's don't have any more homicide." We have had four since that. It's a shame, we don't need that. And the turnout was awful. But those detectives gave a outstanding, outstanding reporter, what's in this city. And it just hurt me that I didn't see many people, gangs, the drugs and everything. And there was a lady there that had four kids, little young kids. She stayed there as long as she could, but she had to leave. Well, one lady did stay, because that kid had a big old quilted overcoat. But anyway, those detectives, I applaud them, because they really did a good job. This Portsmouth Police Force and the Sheriff Department, I would like to see everybody support Sheriff Watson and Captain Leach to give money, blankets for the needy and the homeless. Hey, it don't cost much. I did it last night. Everybody can do it. If you can't help them that way, take a blanket off your house, and make sure you wash it, though. Don't give them no rag or blanket, but make sure you wash it. But anyway, if I have said anything this year that hurt your feeling up here, and disrespectful, well, I'm not going to say, I'm going to apologize. No, I don't apologize, because I said that I'm in it. So, I'm not going to apologize. But anyway, I hope next year that we have a better year, and be kind to one another. Now, you see, I was kind all day tonight, even though how ugly some of you have been to me. Yeah, I'm protifying the mayor. Look at me. Do I look good? You know, that what you said I do. But anyway, taking all that aside, let's all be good Christmas to each and every one. And next year, and I asked for a Christmas tree over there. How come it ain't over there? You've got money for everything else. I want a big Christmas tree over there, light it up for us. So, anyway, sign on. Thank you for all you're doing, each and every one of you. And next year, I hope to see y'all, but some of you won't be up there. And I made a mistake when I said John Roe for 2015, I meant John Roe for 2016. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ursula Murphy?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ursula Murphy. I live and work here in the city of Portsmouth. And in case you know it by now, I do love Portsmouth. I'm here tonight to share with you an upcoming event for Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. December the 17th, which is a week from Thursday, we are having a spaghetti fundraiser in which we have three restaurants that will be competing for, to be crowned, the best spaghetti sauce in the city of Portsmouth. And it's growing already. We've got other contributions, and so I wanted to share that with everybody tonight. We also, and it's going to be at Bydewee, the Pavilion, the tickets are $20 apiece. Call me, I'll be happy to bring you the tickets. We also, I wanted to share with everybody a misnomer that has come before the public, in which some members of the Sheriff's Department have said that the churches don't step up. I got news for you. The churches in the city of Portsmouth step up for the homeless people. And every week, I post online, on my Facebook page and on other pages, where the homeless shelter is for that week, because I'm involved. Get involved. Call anybody at Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless, they'll tell you where the shelter is that week. Call me, I'll tell you where it is that week. If you want to know what you can do to help, I'll tell you what you can do to help. Get involved. Stop complaining, just do it. That's my thoughts. Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, can I just ask you one question on the homeless winter program? And I know you don't run it, but I know you're on the board. How many are we sleeping this year? What is our average count? Do you know?
We started off with 18. I think we're up to 30 right now.
30, okay.
Yeah. Now, we do have some folks that unfortunately, for whatever reasons, they're not allowed to come into the shelter, but we're working on other avenues for that as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I'll try.
Ms. Susan Fink?
Tar?
Heels.
Heels.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simms, City Council, and Dr. Patton. My name is Susan Fink. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of the Portsmouth Juvenile Court. This is a position I've held since October of 2010. We're a small nonprofit organization founded in 1993 to provide services and programs for children involved in the Portsmouth Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court. Simply stated, we work to keep Portsmouth children safe and families together. We have several board members here tonight, and I'd invite them to stand and be recognized. Thank you. Thank you. Our largest program is Portsmouth Court Appointed Special Advocates, or CASA. We recruit, screen, train, and supervise citizen volunteers to advocate for the best interest of children who have been removed from their homes and placed in foster care. These children are in the legal custody of the Portsmouth Department of Social Services. CASA volunteers are sworn officers of the law. Once appointed to a case by a juvenile court judge and armed with a court order, they're required to gather the facts and prepare a report for the court. As you would imagine, we regularly interact with the Portsmouth Department of Social Services staff. We often communicate with them and collaborate with DSS staff, but we function independently. I wish to make two points this evening. The first point is that child protective service and foster care workers have very demanding and very highly stressful jobs. They often deal with destructive and dysfunctional family dynamics associated with child maltreatment. They're also required to document everything that they see, everything that they do, and everything that they hear. In a single case, they may communicate with scores of individuals and coordinate services with multiple providers. Very few of us can claim that our jobs involve life and death decisions. Child protective services and foster care workers can make that claim. As a community, we need to recognize and reward their work. We need to ensure that our Department of Social Services has the human and financial resources to do their jobs effectively. Otherwise, we may be risking the lives of our children.
Thank you, Ms. Fink, very much for what you do for our children and the board here. And I was just combing through your annual report here. It is very impressive. I see here in the back, you have a list of individual donors as well as organizations that give, and it reminded me of the report that came out about a month ago and talked about the level of giving in this region and how well the city of Portsmouth and all of our organizations do when it comes to doing that. And this is, it's really outstanding and well done. Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
Well, I just want to say that our CASA volunteers are partners with the Department of Social Services. We know them well. I would ask that you recognize and honor our CASA workers who do that work for nothing, just because they care about the children in Portsmouth. The other point I want real quickly to make is that 23.8% of the people in Portsmouth are less than 18 years old. You've got a lot of children. Need to pay attention to what kinds of services and protection we offer those children. I would also point out that nowhere in your vision principal statement did I see the word "family" or "children," and that's a little bit troubling to me.
Thank you for the comment. And thank you for what you do, as well as the board. I see quite a few of your board members. Could you please stand again? I wanted to make sure. I saw Bruce Lalande, and I also saw, yes, absolutely. Thank y'all very much for what you do and what our children do. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Michael Roror.
Honorable Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'm Michael A. Roror. I live at 213 G Street. I have lived there for about six or seven years. I'm here to make an urgent suggestion to you all that, in order to save the taxpayers an unnecessary tax burden in the city, one of the major things that you could do very easily is, with reference to the hideous amount of land rent that we are paying on sinking land for the new courthouse, you cut that land rent to $1 a year until the people who own the land get it so it is suitable for the courthouse to stay on it rather than sink. It seems to be a very simple solution. A common sense person with a normal IQ of 110, 115, 120 ought to be able to come up with that. But apparently, for some unknown reason, city council has never gotten the idea. I wanted to give it to you tonight and suggest that if you don't like the idea or you don't want to go with it, I believe that I can get a federal district judge to say it is a very good idea, and I propose this for the city. Thank you, and bang his gavel down. Thank you a lot.
All right, thank you, sir. Let me just ask you, should I? Never mind. Thank you, sir. Good night. Yeah, I get it. I answered my own question. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our final speaker is Ms. Sherri Bailey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager. I wanted to talk about an event that's coming up on Monday, December 14th. It'll be the 150th anniversary of this passage of the 13th Amendment. The 13th Amendment was the amendment that ended slavery in America, and here in Hampton Roads, we have an incredibly important mission, responsibility, and opportunity. This is the birth of the nation, right here in Hampton Roads, starting in 1607 at Jamestown. In 1619, you had your first Africans who got to Jamestown, and they came as indentured servants, who ultimately were the beginning of the black middle class. This is history that the world doesn't really know, and we have an opportunity to share that history with them. Here in Hampton Roads, we have, again, the beginnings of the American dream. In 1861, we had the first of the enslaved who claimed freedom at Fort Monroe. And here in Hampton Roads, we have a big anniversary coming up in three years, in 2019, with the 400th anniversary of those first Africans who came to Jamestown. And there's not a whole lot being done about that right now, and I feel like the city of Portsmouth, we can be the leader in making sure that this region doesn't embarrass itself in 2019. We need to step up and do what we did in 2007 for the 400th anniversary of Jamestown. Jamestown had a multimillion-dollar budget, they had many years of planning, and the Queen of England came over. Now, here we are with another significant 400th anniversary, and we don't have the same type of energy being paid to that, and we have to ask ourselves why. Probably, we all know why, but I don't need to say it aloud here. We simply need to put our heads together and get busy. So on Monday, the 14th, on December 14th, this coming Monday, from noon until 9:00 PM, we will be at the Slover Library, right across the water there, so everybody can just kind of take the ferry ride on over there and walk over to the Slover Library and join us in the celebration of the 13th Amendment being passed. And also to, I have an invitation here that I want to make sure that everybody has that information, because what we will also be doing is premiering the beginning broadcast of WJVA, which the FCC has approved, the Juneteenth Festival Company, to operate in the city of Portsmouth to serve our underserved and voiceless. And listening to what's going on here tonight, we have many of those folks out there, and I was really proud to see the folks in Longport and the community out there, because this is a democracy in action, and that's a wonderful thing to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bailey, let me just add, so this big event coming up in 19?
2019.
2019, there's no collaboration at all within the cities in the region, Hampton, Newport News, none that you know of?
Well, there is a, the city of Hampton has a commission, the Project 1619 Commission, that has been reconstituted recently because the first commission, they had a lot of infighting. And there's a state-level commission, but they're not talking to the city commission. So right now, I have been meeting with various cities and...
So there's no regional effort right now?
There's no regional effort right now. And so recently, the seven cities of Southampton Roads and the Peninsula got a letter from me and information suggesting that we need to make that effort happen now. And in fact, everyone was invited to bring a donation to the event at the Slover on Monday, December 14th. So I hope my city doesn't let me down and that you can be representative of giving the cities, other cities in the region, the understanding that this history recognizes no city boundaries of counties, towns, and cities. It simply is our regional history that we need to respect.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And with that, and being no further business, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, Kwanzaa. And to take, I guess, a page out of the Sergeant Major, let's everybody love somebody over this holiday weekend. Good night.